All the committed the whole meeting to order. First item would be adoption of the agenda. We have one delegation this afternoon. Jennifer Shanks and Jennifer from Vista Housing Society. So Jennifer, welcome and you can take the podium and I understand you have a presentation as well.
So good afternoon, your ayes and councillors. I just wanted to take the time to thank you all for allowing me to come here to talk to you today. My name is Jennifer Shanks and I'm the founder director of Vista Housing Society. And I'm here today to give you a brief overview of what Vista Housing has proposed for Comox, and that is Morgan Heights, which will be a seniors development for 55 years and older, and it will be affordable. But just to give you a brief background as to where this vision came from, it came from me. This is my vision and it really much dovetails with who I am and what my background is all about. I'm a registered nurse with a master's in public administration. And I've had a lot of experience with working at hospitals, communities, and government. And I've had the opportunity to work alongside seniors. And I feel like I know what we need to do in order to provide affordable living and the type of living for seniors to thrive. So, let's move on. So who we are, Vista Housing Society, we're a nonprofit society committed to providing affordable housing options in B.C. We're committed to providing infrastructure that is aesthetically pleasing, suitable, and affordable for a target demographic. And in this case, for Comox, it's for seniors over the age of 55. We have a group of professionals that have extensive background in terms of design, building, and managing. And I have two of the team members here today, Carson Shanks, who will be the project manager and the development manager for Vista and for, excuse me, Morgan Heights. And Lori Nicholson, who will be the manager for the apartment complex. And I'd like to bring to your attention that Lori has 18 years' experience in senior and housing management for seniors and low-income housing. And she's currently the executive director of Parks, Fields, and Life Housing Society and is the manager of Huswick Place, which is based out of Parksville as well. So having said that, what are we proposing? So currently, we're wanting to propose to develop 1.6 acres off of Comox Avenue. It's specifically on 2240 Comox Ave. So it's in between the Harvard Wood duplexes and Glacier View Road. We would like the complex to be 74 self-contained rental suites. And the type of person that will be suitable for this development is a senior who is self and independent and a person needs to downsize from a larger home, but still independently. The building will be four stories, and 38 units will be affordable, and the other 36 will be at market rates. So this formula or business model will enable this development to be self-sustaining without having to go back to government for government support. And I think that's key. So Vista Housing proposes, once this development is complete, we'll be running it as a nonprofit and we'll be leaving it as a legacy. So Comox will be able to enjoy and utilize this facility for opportunity. So why do we need this project with Comox? Well, we all know the population is getting older, and Comox is outpacing this. So we know that by 2031, 30% of the population here will be senior. And currently, the housing situation for this demographic is lacking in this area. We've done the market research and it's showing that in and around this area, everything that's out there is old, so it's 25 years or older. It's not age-responsive, and what I mean by that, it doesn't have the wide hallways to accommodate stroke walkers, it does not have the grab bars on tubs, and it has staffs currently in a lot of the buildings. And what I, what is sad to have heard and learned in October in your community here, Comox, 99 seniors were turned away from emergency shelters due to capacity. So there's definitely a need here and a need that will continue to grow. So what does Vista Housing Society need? We need your help. We need to be in partnership with you in order to make this project a reality. What we need is assistance for rezoning the property. We need assistance in reducing the rezoning fees. And we need to get this done in a fast fashion, we need to expedite it. What specifically we'd like to do is enter into a housing agreement where we can relax the DCC fees, so the developer cost charge is like 0%. And we need to relax the property taxes for a period of time. So why should the town support this affordable housing option for seniors? Well, first, it's doable, it's realistic, and there's past successes on Vancouver Island. I spoke to Huswick House, which is based out of Parksville. There's Lorraine Place, and all of you should have some information on both those developments. This is similar. On top of that, we've invested for the past year and a half a lot of time and energy and money into this project already. So we have market analysis done, we've had arborists, we have architects. So we've had a lot of interest in making this project move forward. We currently have CMHC's support in this project, but what we need next is your support. If we don't gain your support, we won't gain B.C. housing support. And unfortunately, that brings us to a standstill and that development site will move forward as market housing. We don't want that to happen. And we believe that in building better communities and a community that will retain our seniors and have a safe and affordable place for them to live is for us all to come together. So finally, what are the next steps? Well, after we leave here today, Vista Housing will apply for rezoning within the next two weeks. And we'll continue to work alongside the city planners that we've already been working closely with, Regina and Dale, for example, and who've been fortunate enough to walk through some of the developments that I just mentioned. So Huswick House, they've also gone through Carey Place and Lorraine Place. And I'm hoping from this point forward, you'll be able to embrace this project and help us get it moving quicker than not. And we'll touch base and figure out what next steps can be made, but expect a rezoning applications sooner than not. So thank you very much for your time, and if you have any questions, you can ask myself or my team.
Members of council, any questions for the delegation at this time? Yes?
Is there access from the rear of the property? Or would the access be off of Glacier View, I guess, or Comox, whatever that's called?
Well, we've had people come and look at the site, and I think Carson could probably address that question as to where you think maybe the entrance would be.
Maybe we should, we've had a track this summer, but it would be up to a share.
What kind of rents are you talking about?
That's a great question. So when we're talking about the rents, we're talking and looking at the CMHC's level 1 to level 3 affordable housing. So right now, we're talking that there'll be 36 units at market rents, and then the other 38 will be at the affordable, level 1 to 3. So what that translates into when we're looking at a one-bedroom suite at market or portable would be anywhere from $6.50 to $8.10 per month, depending on where you are within the building.
And what would market rent be then?
Market rent would be $8.60 to $9.60 per month.
And that's for a one-bedroom?
That's a one-bedroom. There will be some two-bedrooms, and they will range from $1,050 to $1,200.
And would you guarantee those rents, or how would that work? Because I could see, I mean, I can just see that you get building and it costs you a lot and blah, 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 and all of a sudden, it's not affordable anymore. And we've granted, you know, we've granted you some things, you're asking for DCCs and other things from us, and suddenly, it's not affordable anymore.
Right. Let me just pose that question to Lori. I know she has vast amount of experience and has operational in such a facility. So what we did is we signed an agreement with the city of Parksville and gave it a term so that we committed for the period of time that we agreed with the city that it would be affordable housing. So we didn't get that relaxation without entering an agreement.
Okay.
And what was the length of the term of that agreement?
15 years.
Councilor Tom?
Thanks for your presentation. Have you spoken to B.C. housing and have you got any sort of a commitment from them?
Without your commitment, we are in contact with them, but before we can move forward with speaking with them in more complex terms and asking for further support, we need to have your agreement. So I think we all know that government, so we're looking local, provincial, federal, we all need to be coming into agreement almost at the same time for things to come together. But right now, we have the federal commitment with the CMHC, with their funding that we've already received.
The $10,000 for that?
And more.
Well, you know, I've been down, I've met with Rich Coleman, I don't know, twice now, Shane Ramsey, who's the president of B.C. Housing, and they're like a broken record.
Right.
"We have no money." That's all they ever tell us. And I went down there with the mayor of Courtney and the chair of the regional district and...
What were you asking for?
For asking for money for supportive housing, for homeless people. You know, those people that you talk about that are getting turned away from shelters.
I mean, I can't speak for them, but what I do know is with shelters, a lot of times, they are responsible for giving ongoing funding. I think where B.C. housing is and where CMHC is coming from now, they don't want to be responsible for continual funding, and that's why this project is different. We're going to be self-sustaining. We're looking for help initially, and then this project will be on its own to indefinite time period. So...
If I may, Tom, I think what's available here is B.C. housing will help find mortgage at a cheaper rate. They won't give out funds, but they will help societies get cheaper finance.
And you think with those rents that you can make those numbers work?
I'm charging $9.50 for a one-bedroom in Parksville.
I charge $9.50 for a two-bedroom in Comox, and I can't make the numbers work.
Well, we'll see what happens, I guess.
Well, it's likely.
Any more questions for the delegation?
Well, the only officer isn't open.
I was just wondering, this funding model that you have, is that a common arrangement?
It is.
And it's sufficient for ongoing operations as well?
It is. And again, I would pass that question along to the lady that's living it right now with being very successful system down the road in Parksville. We were very fortunate to get funding from B.C. housing. So we have rents at 400 or 30% market, because we have to charge 30% of their income for our units. And then we have market rents on our top floor and commercial on the bottom that help offset the cost of the building, so.
The commercial helps, yeah.
So is the project fully occupied?
Oh, yes.
Bye.
If I may, if I could ask, please, your business with Parksville or others, you talked about waiving property taxes for a certain time.
We have no taxes at all forever for our residential component of the building. We had a five-year tax relaxation for the commercial component. However, we still have to pay the school board and those portions. But for the cities portion of our commercial component, we are tax-free for five years.
And otherwise?
And all the rest is tax-free forever in our residential.
All right, one more question here?
Yeah, so my only other issue was with a rezoning, of course. It's up to the citizens of the town as to how that goes.
Right.
And maybe more specifically, that neighborhood. We just had a rezoning in that neighborhood and it wasn't really well-received in some cases. So it was much smaller scale than what you're doing by, I think it was only eight units there. So, you know, again, depending on what they all, you know, they're going to have a big say in what goes on in that neighborhood too. So are you planning on doing any kind of work within the neighborhood?
Yes, definitely. That would be another step that we would be setting up, a space where they could come and speak to us directly, and we can show them what we're planning to develop in that area so we can address any concerns at that time before moving forward, once we have everybody on board. So definitely.
Thank you.
Yes?
What would you see as being a tall, costly project? And do you have a timeline given if we were standing in the way of rezoning?
Well, if we were standing in the way of rezoning, I think we could probably, we'd like to break ground sooner than later. So we've done all the legwork up to here, up to now. We have the private side on board, we need to get your side on board, get B.C. housing. But if it wasn't any obstacles from this side, Carson, what would you say?
Three lists, if we probably have three lists. We've tendered out to you.
And cost of the build here?
It's about, I think it's about $10.4 total build out.
All right, well, what will happen with this, other than what you're doing in terms of the rezoning applications? Staff will bring this back to us for consideration of their requests. Timeline for that, see you.
Now, once the initial application is submitted, we'll work on the other aspects about the DCC relaxation and other requests they've put in. So, let's end the month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll put it here.
All right, so we'll move on to the agenda. There are no minutes of meetings, no departmental reports. We have a number of staff reports along with our director of finance. So the first one is an update on the community works funds, and I would like to receive that memo at several pages.
You will receive?
When received then, all is in favor, motion is carried. That's an update on where we are with the community works funds. Also, no gas tax money until this one. Questions from the council? Yes?
So we're overspent by about $400,000 on here. How do we propose to make that? Yeah, I mean, if we did everything that we've asked, how would we make that difference up? Are you thinking that maybe future gas tax money, or is that where you were thinking?
As all goes to timing projects as well. So I think the comment is this list may well be reduced. With our funds at hand and as we go through our five-year financial plan, as you know, some projects take off from one year to the next, depending on capacity and bids and so on. And I think in particular, the one that we still don't know a whole lot about yet is the streetlight conversion. I think that's been planned out, but that's still subject to technology being determined.
For that?
You know what, technology's around.
Yes.
So certainly have your question though. And the terms of renewal of the gas tax are still to be determined as well. So as we go forward, more light will be shed on all those things. Any further on that report? Move on to the next one, which was requested by council. A staff report on our Comox debt per capita. And that's page 27, so for receipt of that.
You will receive?
I'll second that.
Received then, all is in favor, motion is carried. Any questions or comments, councillor Grant?
First off, I'd like to thank our finance officer for bringing this forward. It was a much more elaborate report than I was really looking for, but thank you. And, you know, I find it interesting that, you know, when I look around at our streets and our parks and everything else, that, you know, we stand alone in the community, I think, and yet our debt is about a quarter of our neighbors', large and small neighbors, so.
On a per capita basis?
On a per capita basis, yeah. We're very low. And I'm also quite glad I don't live in Belkara or Massacre.
Well, I just get nervous when we get a report with the numbers are so small you can't read them, but in this case, it's actually good news, so.
Well, as you know, I mean, councils for quite a few years have had a philosophy between, as you go borrowing over short-term in the last number of years. I think the dementia that we had along this was the initial Comox rec. One of that just got paid out. That was a 20-year one, dating from the improvements made in '92. And of course, further improvements happened, libraries, base acquired, et cetera. So, but those terms are much shorter, and that gives us the flexibility as planned out here. And as we look at our financial plan, you'll see some of that debt get retired towards the end of the five-year plan, which then frees it up for building more infrastructure spending. So flexibility, I think it's consistent with our auditors' reports that we've received over the last number of years indicating a good financial flexibility as a result. Anything further?
Yeah, and I think I read a report that in the future, the requisition from the regional district for our sewer, the sewer requisition, 66% of that requisition will go for debt interest alone. So, I much prefer the philosophy of this town than others.
Well, unfortunately, on the hospital front, we do have a dividend payment not regaried.
We do.
But you're right.
And the water, we've been collecting money for that.
Well, as the CIO and I were discussing the other day, as the Build Canada Fund starts to unfold a billion dollars for smaller communities, which is under $100,000, hopefully those funds, some of those funds might become available for something like sewer.
Yeah, which hasn't been factored in yet.
Regional initiatives, but a billion dollars across Canada for communities of under $100,000.
Not very much money.
We'll see where that goes.
What do we get, about a foot of sewer pipe for that?
We'll see. All right, thank you for that. Kudos to the finance department for bringing that forward and, of course, keeping this all in line now. Okay, we now are going to look at the report at page 31, which is to do with climate action. It's called a draft care public report, which is Climate Action Revenue Incentive Public Report for the year 2013. And staff are looking for approval of that draft.
I'll move that.
In terms of discussion, is there any questions or comments? I guess the good news here is that we have reduced our offset amounts from 607 tons down to 400 feet, resulting in the acquisition of the electric vehicle and beginning of our organics composting program. That'll mean that our offset purchases will be smaller as we go forward. Yes, bye.
Just in the report, there was whether we wanted to add anything to the report.
Yes.
As I went through it, I noted that certainly under the organics, as greatly noted it, but I thought maybe we could put some numbers. And our last report said we had 76 tonne or 70 tonne garden production in comparison to the previous year. Maybe we could give them some details on that. A question on the green space, where we indicate we've acquired 2.5 acres. Does that include Brooklyn and 1988 Balfour?
Repairing area?
Says under green space, yeah, we're repairing along Brooklyn Bridge.
Director of Finance?
So it wouldn't be Balfour.
That doesn't include Balfour because we haven't determined the configuration there. So we don't know how much of that site will remain as green space. Marvin brought forward a proposal to a recent meeting of council, and we'll be going to a public meeting to meet the neighbors and kind of see what their reaction is to that one. So for calculating this, all I knew for certain was the acreage of the Brooklyn site. And this doesn't include the Northeast Woods because that didn't complete until January.
That does. Oh, proposed actions for next year.
Yeah, it's mentioned for 2014, but not completed in 2013.
Gotcha.
You should go ahead and question the number.
I just remember citing something.
And then the only other thing was, because as members of the regional district, we participate, and we have now created the Comox Valley Community Carbon Marketplace, perhaps that might be worth mentioning, that we now have a community marketplace that should we have to buy carbon offsets, we could potentially buy them from within our own community.
Well, maybe that can be included in our other actions. Sounds reasonable. Anything further? So with those indications, we should be able to finalize our report to Director of Finance?
Yes, and that'll be on council agenda next week.
Great, thank you. Thank you, council, for those comments. So all is in favor? Motion is carried. Page 47, a report from our recreation director on proposed staff changes in the recreation budget for 2014 to 2018, and motion to receive that report?
You will receive?
Second.
Received then, all is in favor, motion is carried. Our director of recreation is here. Any questions, comments, concerns? The report is relatively self-explanatory, but we will back here into our budget, so this is the rationale for it.
I assume Jim's being somewhat conservative in these numbers to make sure that it does actually pay for itself along the way? Is that, am I being correct in that?
Yeah, we always try to be conservative as possible. Revenue is always a bit of a guess. You never know exactly what people are going to be willing to do. Based on the past two, three years' experience and the kind of traffic that we've been getting in the center, certainly indicates that we're in that neighborhood. We also do have the option, is if we start to see revenues not reaching targets, to trim expenses as we go along.
Or review rates.
Or review rates.
There is the income side, you're right. Yeah, who's just pulling up?
All right. Any further on that? No, okay, so thank you for that. So take that into consideration as we go forward to the budget, which is next on the agenda. Starting at page 49, motion to receive the first draft of the 2014 financial plan and related staff report.
You can move that.
On the seat then, all is in favor, is carried. So hopefully, everyone's had a chance to digest that comprehensive report and the comments associated with it. This sort of continues the discussion we've had over the last number of committees, the whole, and certainly need, staff needs some further direction from council on the plan itself, and then also some other requests for funding that we've received. So councillor Ken Grant, you can start.
Thanks. Well, I'd like to see us try and keep our number down closer to 2% than 2.7, but I understand that the staff had to have a starting number. Richard brings up a discussion here on the RCMP officers that we budget every four years. We, I don't recall, I mean, we continually defer this one. Our crime rates continually go down, and we don't hire any more officers or any other civilian staff with them. So I'm wondering what would happen if we took that out of the financial plan for five years and if we had to put it back in at some point, how we could deal with it at the time? But I'd be interested to know what the impact of that would be.
Okay, I think the staff have some numbers of that.
Yes, your worship. If you remove the RCMP officer, the 496,500, as well as the civilian support of 118,000, that would bring your tax increase for 2014 down to 1.1%. So you'd be removing 1.6% of the increase from this year. And the assumption is that we would leave the 2.7% over a minimum of four years to tax increase in the financial plan.
So that seems to me to be a far more palatable number when I look at hydro increasing the rates by 28% and the regional district is hitting us with a fairly significant increase. And I realize it's not our doing, but, you know, it's got to break somewhere for people. And so that makes a lot of sense to me. I don't know what others think of that, but I'd be interested to hear the comments on that.
We'll just go around the table on that one, councillor Fletcher.
Yeah, I have to agree with, when we see the reports on the crime and then Comox seems to be not the area that they typically have their focus on, I tend to agree with how we can justify increasing. I guess in the back of my head, I have this, we're creeping toward that magic number, and I think, well, is that going to really hit the community hard when that happens?
Sorry, what number are you talking about? Just sort of.
Population number of 50,000, we take on a much greater RCMP cost.
70% to 90%.
I'm just wondering how that would look if we were, you know, would we smooth it out by doing it?
out by doing it this way, or are we just going to take it?
Well, that will happen when it happens, and other communities will adjust to that. This, I guess, policy that we had adopted a number of years ago, I think when Mayor Brass was here, he and the rest of council at that time were dealing with growth rates of, you know, two, three, one percent. And the sense at that time was we should, you know, keep ahead of this and add officers every four years. In the last few years, as far as it's still about 2008, 2009, the growth rates have been a lot less than that. So as you've done in the sewer and tried to stretch things out, we've certainly stretched this out. It wouldn't hurt to take it out of the plan, as far as reaching that threshold of fifteen thousand in population, that may be still in the nears ahead rather than sooner. So, I mean, we'll have to come to that grips with that at some point. I know that my counterpart at the city court, he has expressed concern around the funding formula, but it is what it is. And the only way we can control leasing costs at this point is by the number of officers. We're not proposing to reduce them, but perhaps not add one is what's suggested. You know, whatever happens when we reach fifteen thousand, unless we ask people to leave, to reduce it below that.
That's so before one, come right there.
Well, it's a good thing to keep in mind. You know, we're probably a few years away from that yet, but good points.
No, I totally support it. I think it's a good idea. They seem to bring this up every year, and they seem to be bringing one quite nicely. It's a great idea. And I like the idea of having a small tax increase.
Boy, most people would think that.
Who wants a bigger one?
That's enough.
Well, I support removing that from the five-year capital plan. You know, we've seen in the past where we budget, you know, for so many FTEs and the police, and they can't even fill that complement. So, and as I think councillor Fletcher said, our crime rate is going down, so I would support removing that.
All right, we seem to have consensus on that. We should put that to a motion, then, I think, at this point. So move, that motion would be removed from the financial plan for leasing items as noted on page fifty-two, in terms of the addition of police officer and civilian support.
Yeah, I'll move that.
Is that appropriate? Okay. All those in favor? Motion's carried. First, that will go to next council's meeting for formal approval, along with anything else that may come forward. So, other comments, additions, subtractions, concerns?
Well, I would like to see us, I'm still not really happy with the twenty-five thousand dollars a year we're putting into the water meter project. I don't know the number of people that actually phoned up and volunteered for one, but I know it was quite low. It was in the neighborhood of one or two. And it seems to me that that money could just go to a lot better use. I think Tom had a good suggestion that we could put that into a fund and allow the BIA to come up with some ideas as to how they could use it for downtown revitalization or revitalization. And I'd like to see us, I'd like to see us do that as well.
All right. Have we received any requests to that, if that come to the BIA at this point?
We have not, but we just have a new board, and we were supposed to meet last night, and we got snowed out, or the night before last, we got snowed out. So, you would have, but, yeah, maybe it could go to the snow removal.
Yeah. And is there anything specific in the financial plan or capital plan that you're referring to, or something that's being proposed?
I was looking, you know, there's always concern about what, you know, I mean, that twenty-five thousand dollars that's in water meters is gas tax money. And then it's, the concern is always, well, the project has to be matched the criteria for the gas tax. So I looked through our five-year capital plan, and if we go on the capital plan for 2014, which is page ninety-two, and we look under engineering structures, it says Greenway Development for Brooklyn Creek, there is twenty-four thousand and sixty dollars that's coming out of general revenue. And if we were to move that gas tax money over into the Greenway Development, then move that twenty-four thousand dollars down into a, into a wayfinding fund or something, and have our representative on the BIA, work with the BIA on a project to spend that twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand and sixty dollars this year. I think that that's going to, you know, that's going to show our downtown business people who are hurting, and, you know, that we do care and that we're looking for ways to help them. And I know it's sitting in those meetings with the consultants we hired to do up the IST grant for the Marina project down here, that wayfinding is an issue in the town of Comox. So I would like to see that money, as a matter of fact, I'm going to move that we make that those changes.
Sorry, I'll try to follow this thing.
Okay, so right now, we've got twenty-five thousand dollars going into water meter. I want to take that twenty-five thousand dollars out of water metering, and I want to put it into the Greenway, Greenway Development for Brooklyn Creek. And the twenty-four thousand and sixty dollars that's in the financial plan, I want to take that twenty-four thousand dollars and put it into a wayfinding fund, a signage fund or a fund where we work with the BIA and on a project to help them with their downtown revitalization.
So if I'm hearing that correctly, you want to replace the twenty-four sixty that we're taking general revenues and use the gas, the water meter money instead of that?
Right.
Then the general revenue money you've got, we can take.
Into the wayfinding fund, or whatever you want to call it. And it's general revenue fund, so we don't have to worry about gas tax criteria or anything else.
All right, so I take that. I understand the motion better now. Give her a second.
I know.
It was confusing, but I get it now.
I'm confused.
All right, before we debate that, a couple of questions that I think staff should try to address is, first of all, what is this Greenway Development project? And look at whatever it is under there, be eligible. I see that there's some DCC money there as well. What that's about, and whether that has eligibility for gas tax. And the second question would be, can we create a, whatever they're calling this, wayfinding fund without, we're obviously creating it thin air at the moment, but we haven't had a request, we haven't had a costed out item, and of course, we have another application, so.
Your worship, a couple of things. Let's start with the Brooklyn Creek. We have been applying, Al Fraser has had thirty thousand dollars a year for the last several years to spend on Brooklyn Creek. And it's a combination of habitat restoration, which is an eligible expenditure under Community Works Fund, and a trail, because the trail goes alongside the creek. So he's been working with Pacific Salmon Foundation and other local partners to restore sections of Brooklyn Creek each and every year for the last several years. And because Greenway Development is also an eligible expenditure under our DCC, Open Space Bylaw, we've been funding twenty percent of the thirty thousand from DCCs, Open Space DCCs, and eighty percent from Community Works Funds. So it is an eligible expenditure. You could do this, right? You could, you could apply twenty-four thousand and sixty dollars a year from the Community Works Fund. And really, the reporting out is very simple, as in all trails and sidewalks, we just tell them how many meters of habitat and trail will be restored. So that's step number one. Step number two is, well, what, you know, what do we do about the downtown revive? I guess I would suggest maybe putting in our capital plan twenty-four thousand and sixty dollars and describe it as downtown revitalization, and just leave it as that. And then how it actually gets used can be between council and BIA.
So we're not talking specifically, I take it, as the movement, this motion about the BIST project, which has, it's just below there, a million dollars in total, with two hundred fifty thousand dollars coming out of Marina Capital waterfront, no, but these are?
No, no.
You're talking about a separate project?
A separate project, yes. Because we really haven't totally defined.
No, not at all.
But in meeting with those consultants, you know, who are, you know, quite knowledgeable about, you know, downtown revitalization and all that, they identified wayfinding in the town of Comox as an issue. And it just came to my mind that, you know, I mean, if we can have this money set aside, twenty-four thousand and sixty this year, and, I didn't look into 2015, was there, okay, so both years, so then we can, you know, rather than us just running off and spending this money on what we think is appropriate, I thought it would be appropriate to work with the BIA on how to spend this fifty to forty-eight thousand dollars over the next two years.
Okay, so your motion is actually for 2014 and 2015?
The BIA's next meeting is, we're hoping it's next Monday. I didn't actually get a status report before I got here, but we were trying to set it up for next Monday. And we could certainly have this on the agenda and get everybody thinking in the right direction. We've only had one meeting with the new board, so.
Yeah, it'd certainly be helpful to have something from the BIA as to.
Well, they'll find something for sure, yeah.
Yeah, I understand. And they certainly have to consider renewing their mandate, because their mandate's up at the end of this year.
That's right, yeah. And they are working on that currently, so that's been ongoing for the last.
But as our director of finance says, we can simply pull it downtown revitalization and then leave it there pending further details.
Do I have a second?
Yes, you do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear it. I'm not over here debating.
You're on your own here, buddy.
The movement's seconded, and it's been clarified that it's for both 2014 and 2015. So I think we're all clear. We got the two questions I had answered. Anything further?
Well, as I said before, I value having that twenty-five thousand dollars in the water meter, I have my eye on it. As we move down the road, the expenditures that we have with the water service, we will be looking to the province for support, I'm sure. And I think anytime we can show the province that we are wary of conservation of water, I think that will bode well with us. So I'd like to keep that, that line out there. As far as, I don't doubt that the consultant has said this is what the downtown needs, but I can tell you as a business, there's, there's costs. And if anything can help a business in Comox, it's what the tax bill looks like. And already the businesses have, we still are paying off the downtown revive. We have that extra cost of a BIA. So, you know, to add another cost, I'd like to see this proposal go forward, but certainly I was hoping to see it come from IST ones, something else, not another cost to the businesses.
All right, well, let's have a further debate. Go ahead, councillor.
I wasn't talking about adding a single solitary nickel to the cost to the downtown. We're talking about moving funding from a water meter project into a different project that's going to help the downtown businesses. And I'm sure if you were to go knock on every door of every business in downtown Comox, save one, you would find that they would rather spend that forty-eight thousand dollars over the next two years to help their businesses rather than putting in water meters. And as far as talking about conserving water and our dealings with the province, I will put the town of Comox's water consumption numbers up against any municipality in this province or this country. The town of Comox uses a small amount of water per capita. We don't have to apologize to any level of government for the amount of water that we use. So we don't need further water metering, especially forty-eight thousand dollars is not going to go anywhere in finishing the water metering project in the town of Comox. So I think this is a better use of the money. We've spent enough money on water meters. We're into this for a lot of money, and we don't have money to finish the project. So I'm fully in support of this motion.
All right, just, I know that this topic came up in a slightly different way, and it was related to the IST thing more particularly when I was away a few meetings ago. And I think the question you had related to staff around, okay, well, what happens with, you know, road projects and other things, you know, water lines break, what is the town policy, putting water meters in? And maybe the CEO can just refresh us on that. I mean, if this money is taken out on gas tax and reallocated, that doesn't mean you wouldn't spend money as required on infrastructure, which includes water meters sometimes.
Correct. So if, standard practice right now is that if, on an existing street, if a water service needs replacing, we will go in and update that water service, put in the meter setter box and the meter, which brings us to the same standard that we apply to new subdivisions that are brought into the town. And that, that practice will continue. So it will be funded by the water fund.
And also, I guess, as far as putting this money aside, say, forty-eight thousand, hundred and twenty dollars for this year and next, that money would sit there unless and until councillor approves a project with some.
Correct, yes.
So it's an allocation, I think.
Absolutely.
All right, yes?
I was just wondering, Richard, if you could speak to, I can see upgrading the system and getting things ready already. I'm just wondering whether putting in the meter has some true value. Would that be to detect the pitch and so on? Most residents aren't opting for a meter grid at this, at this point. And I know these meters are only good for, they have a limited life.
As, as all infrastructure does, have a limited life. Interestingly enough, since council provided or changed the opt-out, opt-in provision for metering, whether you choose to accept a billing by meter by the bulk rate, we've actually had an increase in the number of people that volunteered to sign up because now they have the option of opting their own. It's, the standard we're applying is the same standard we apply to a developer that brings in a new subdivision. So as, as they raise or bring in new infrastructure, we apply those same practices to other parts in the town. So it's taking it to the same standard that's in our subdivision specifications.
And whether or not somebody has opted in, if there is a meter there and staff notice a problem, a letter goes out saying, hey, there could be a leak here, or maybe you've got a hose left on, things like that. So even without somebody opting in to paying for it, we have found on quite a few occasions, issues that have been helpful to reduce consumption.
It's been very effective in, in the leak detection side of things. Not only leak detection, but education of, of our customers and the amount of water they're using. A lot of, a lot of people that get the letters saying, you know, that we advise the people that they're getting close to that number of six hundred cubic meters. If you use more than six hundred cubic meters in a year period, we start billing you by the cubic meter on top of that. And the largest culprit, other than leaks that are, that are found, are irrigation systems. People are still convinced that the irrigation systems are water, are efficient. And what the numbers prove is that quite often they're the biggest culprit of over-usage. So it is part of a process that over the last number of years, we have been able to educate people, and for some, find some significant leaks that have been helping avoid, you know, excessive damage in their homes.
So just, we can demonstrate to the province should the opportunity arise that we could conserve some water and steward some water.
Well, we have a number of things going in our favor. We have, in fact, roughly one third of the homes are metered. We have a number of people that have signed up. We have the numbers as Chair of the Water Committee has alluded to. And we have an enforcement program that we still use in the summertime, and we've had some success on our water restrictions. So, I mean, it's a three-pronged approach, always has been, always will be. And, yes, quite frankly, we've probably done as much as we can without senior government support for further initiatives. And, you know, that'll happen at a regional district level well before it'll happen at the town. So, you know, in terms of this specific recommendation, I tend to agree with councillor Fletcher that I'd like to see that other one continue. But on the other hand, I can see what's being proposed here is making some sense, subject to whatever the BIA. is, is making some sense, subject to whatever the BIA brings for it. And certainly, I was a little worried about it being tied in with the IST thing, because, of course, if we do spend any money on that, then we lose the match at the end. But seeing how it's separate and it's subject to BIA input, I think it's consistent with the approach that council's taken over the last two years to try to work with the businesses, starting from, you know, parking relaxation to the downtown incentive program that we're going to bring for here the next month. And this little piece of it, hopefully, will result in something. I'm not saying that we have to have signs everywhere, but certainly, an approach of a wayfinding consistent with best practices would be something I can support. Anything further?
I just want to make a comment on something our CAO brought up. And that is that a lot of our water usage is, you know, because of these irrigation systems that are, you know, people are overwatering. And I was always a proponent of better education. And we could do that quite cost-effectively. Just, we could hire a summer student with a bicycle to, to start going around at four o'clock in the morning. And, and you find those people, because I've helped so many people. And, you know, just by telling them, you know, just get somebody else, or if you can't program your sprinkler system, get somebody else to program. Because you don't have to water your lawn for any more than about 20 minutes a week.
I think we do have somebody on his bike, Ed Ghulahan, who goes around and.
Yeah, he works for the regional district.
But he, he does work in the town. He's contracted with him.
He's got a huge.
And the nice thing about Ed is he's, he's very surreptitious on his bike. And with all due respect to what a summer student might be able to do, he has XRCMP training, so he knows how to deal with people that may not be as receptive.
But the other thing, and I'm glad you brought up Ed Ghulahan, because I think he's a great guy and he does a great job. But he can't physically, under the terms of his contract, go in and program somebody's sprinkler system.
But I think there have been discussions around that with people. So, I mean, the offer is there, and it may be something we'd look at. And certainly, through the district, if you've got any money in the education bucket there at the RD. We'd be willing to. We'd be willing to have something.
I'd like to call the question. I think we beat this to death, don't we not?
I just have one more question. So if we take that money out, if someone comes forward requesting a water meter for their home, why not?
Put it in.
Comes out of water reserves.
Yeah, it's part of our water.
So there's still the opportunity.
As, as if somebody comes and applies for a secondary suite, part of the provisions of a secondary suite is we install water. Again, that's, that's our infrastructure that we use. As, as a summer student can, can go around and spot these people, our water meters also have the ability to collect that data on a 30-day system. And we can point out with hard numbers that here's where your water usage is going. And, and, you know, it's a very informative, very eye-opening experience for most of the people that get the information. And then it leads them to usually change their program.
Just to be, to be clear, because there's not a line item, if we remove this line item, we're not saying the voluntary water metering program has disappeared.
It's just an allocation.
It's just somewhere else.
Director of Finance?
So, so to clarify, the line item remains. It's just funded from a different source. Is that, am I understanding correctly? Am I understanding correctly?
CEO?
Yes. The, the program is still in place, right? Because it's more than just, more than just the installation of the meters included, making sure that the homes are metered any, the installation, the multifamily approach for those that ask for it.
There's my question. All those in favor of the motion? Motion's clear. Thank you for that suggestion and good discussion. All right, anything else in the budget?
I just have one question about the Norkey's rain study and the $20,000 for standard area.
All right, what page you have?
Seventy-two.
Thank you.
If you could just have an update about that cost line and.
Talking about the study itself as opposed to the budget?
Well, I say funding standard study area, and another $20,000. Anyway, I'm just curious as to what all that is.
Sorry, another $100,000?
Twenty.
How can you be, manage that study?
So, CAO, we've got budget items there of $20,000 each of 2012, 2013, 2014 for that. And I assume that, it doesn't look like anything's been spent, but. Yeah, sorry, it has $11,532, so on and so forth. So there, I guess there's a couple items there, maybe a comment on it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Don, but that's the money that we are using to pay Jim Dumont, who is our engineer?
There's, there's two portions of it. The portion that our reviewer could, because it's the developer, it's the proponents that are doing the study, but we've hired an expert to review their work. And so for him, we budgeted $19,000 in 2012. We spent $11,000. We reevaluated the budget in 2013. We budgeted $10,000. We spent $3,500. And so $6,400 is what carries forward to 2014. So that's Jim's, that's for what we expect to pay for Jim Dumont to do his work as well. We agreed to contribute to the proponents' costs, $20,000. And that hasn't been spent yet. And it basically has rolled forward from 2012, 2013 to 2014. And the reason we were willing to contribute that is that we wanted them to perform a study that looked at a wider, a bigger watershed, bigger portion of the, of that watershed than just the proponents' lands. Because we wanted to see how they fit into the bigger picture for that area. So we were actually asking them to spend extra money. And that was why council agreed to contribute $20,000 to that process. As I say, we haven't spent that portion of it yet. But we expect to, this year, as they finish up stage two and then finish up stage three.
And any update, Mr. Blanner?
The staff comments are going to our consultant on these two reports. The, it's more in terms of technical specifics as opposed to the overall approach. So there's some green to staff and themselves on the overall approach. We have received, we only have occasions becoming board of council for, for primarily along Cambridge to go from R 1.1, which is 600 meters, for the park size, to R 3.2, which is our standard, our current standard lot size, of 450 square meters and 13,500 square foot. So we're in terms of, as we started looking at some of our water management and facilities and stuff. We've also had our first initial meeting up to be staff and consultant on some of the challenges in terms of, about the rail. And so we'll be continuing with that. And we're also, we're working on the extension, how we're going to extend this out from the New Park, from the ground in these Comoxes, and that's going to go through Cambridge. And basically, we have that top-down picture. We have an interesting line extension. So that's also.
So I guess, you know, that comes back to budget in a sense of DCC contributions as those lots. Which you'll note on the Finance Director's report is a concern that we'll have to ask our, check our roads or DCCs by 2013 if we have, might have more application. Hopefully not of the kind where they want us to wait for the DCC. So the earlier motion around placing has removed just over 600,000 of additional expenditures. The CRC, Rec Center expenses, total of 370,000. As alluded to in the earlier memo, we have the fire department, fire chief here looking for additional funding of $25,000 here each time around years to help cope with increased capital costs around the turnover of the department, getting many-time responses. And of course, we have the additional waterfront development there contributions for the matching of the IST projects. So those are the key highlights that the Director of Finance has noted as additions. And, you know, with the leasing cost motion, bringing our rate down to the range of 1.1 for this year still leaves the balance of the 500, 2.7s down. So there you have it. I guess if there's any, nothing further, then we can bring that to council the next week for further approval. Any further coming on the budget this time? Okay, good work. Thank you, Finance Director. And rest of staff, you worked on that? And for council's deliberations. So now that we've cut it down to 1.1, there's always somebody with a handle, right?
We have it on.
We have at page 103, a summary of three funding requests that we received to date. Crime stoppers, the DARE program, and the Comox Art Crisis Museum. Those are for consideration. Maybe further direction, council, or page should arrive.
Does the, either of the two RD directors just tell us the crime stoppers went to the regional district and said they've not been added that yet? Or are they not going to be, or what's going on?
Fletcher, or you have?
So we recently approved the ending of the victim services function to include crime stopping costs. That will not be seen in 2014.
They do have a reserve, I understand.
They're, they're fine with $2,050.
So they're, they're dealing with that?
We're good on that one?
Yeah.
The DARE program is an relatively nominal amount. I know their communities have granted that request. I think it's kind of a student, might open that up when they pick that one up, parent advising committee or two. Shouldn't be that difficult. And I'm unsure whether this is something that we should be taking.
Worship, this is also something I've seen in many communities where the, where this request has been withdrawn. Because it was a, it was a form letter sent to, I think, every community on the island, at least that I'm aware of. And I'm not sure how serious they are behind this. I'm sure they'd like the money, but at the same time, it's not something that seems to be a priority.
Was there ever anything further? I did ask that question on the DARE platters forum. Well, we've got one, unless anyone wants to bring that forward. Comox Art Crisis Museum are looking for an additional $5,000 for the 2014 year for their mapping project. So that's for consideration. That's Fletcher.
That was a one-time request?
Well, I think they're looking at an increase in the operating expectancy of the given $25,000 a great day. Obviously, anything you can give them to support that would be great, but I think it was looked at as more a core funding. We also referenced getting some staffing costs increases.
It does say $5,000 per year.
Yes. And my hope on that would be that perhaps the circus club or somebody might be helping with that as a more project-specific thing. You may recall that at the outset of this term, we did, you know, three-year commitments to all of the various organizations that we support. And my sentiment is that we should leave it at that. If the next council wants to increase something based on another three, or I guess maybe now a four-year plan, for the next council, be up to them. We don't need to do anything specific on that. Of course, it'd be subject to further comments as we convene again on budget. All right, so we'll leave that. And just a heads up, I got a letter. I think we're having an elevation come on the 12th of March. Is that ready to show? From the Comox Valley Housing Task Force.
Yes.
They would like to come to us looking for funding. So we'll see what that entails, but again, we'll be looking at budget probably at that meeting as well. We'll see what we do with that. So we're getting near the end of it, but of course, it doesn't have to be finally adopted until May 15th. So the whole staff will get it wrapped up soon and that. All right, and lastly, then, correspondence we received is from the Staff Sergeant on the 11th comparing the 2014 mandate performance plan.
I'm going to proceed.
Sir?
Before you ask for more money for some cases.
I would just like staff to extend invitations to the new inspector when he does arrive. Can you give him where that's going? And then we can tell him that.
Well, can we call this?
By the way, there's no funding.
Is all those in favor received? Motion's clear. Nothing further on the agenda receiving, so I'm looking to adjourn the order.
Sure.
Favor?
Motion's clear.